Good morning. Let's call the meeting to order, please. Today is August 22nd. We're here at the Civic Center for our monthly meeting. We'll stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll police?
Mr. McLaughlin, Ms. Albrecht.
Here.
Mayor Cathy.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Putnall.
Here.
Thank you. I don't have anything at this time. Thanks. Jerry?
No.
No.
Nope.
Wow. All right, moving on to citizens' comments. You have a comment? Come to the podium, identify yourself, address the council. Any citizens' comments? All right. Under the consent agenda, we have a, from our August 8th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Is there any additions or corrections? Is there any opposition? Motion carries five up. Dewberry. You're up.
Jeff Britton, Dewberry. Actually feel kind of bad, slow down the meeting, say something. Pretty good there. Only I want to touch on today is the alternate water supply. The test drill was in over 800 feet deep. On air results are back. We encountered four I to about 400 feet, but down around that 800 foot depth, the water quality appears to be good.
Sorry. At the, at the next meeting, we'll have a project task or change order to drill deeper to be able to get the volume of water we need for the alternate water supply. If this is going to become a production well, we're going to need to go another 90 or 100 feet deep. And so, there'll be, there'll be a cost associated with extending the well deeper and then some water quality testing as well. But that'll be at the next meeting. You'll have some paperwork ahead of time with costs to review. That's pretty much it for me right now. Anybody have any questions on what we're working on?
What's the financial arrangement for the change order?
It's all covered by the DEP grant that we have, or the state legislative grant that we have for the project. None of, none of the money will come out of the city's pocket.
At what, if you're going then roughly like 1,000 feet?
Right around 900.
900 feet?
Yes, sir.
What size pipe? What volume of water are we looking to get?
We're looking to get around 500,000 to 600,000 gallons per day.
Per day?
Yeah.
All right, that's all I, anybody else? Anyone for Dewberry on our alternate water? Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. All right, Resolution 2017. And that is a resolution for the land transfer from the county. I think, I assume that everyone is familiar with what we're doing there. There's four parcels of property that they have transferring title to, to the city, which is Sunset Park. That little, what was commonly known for years as the Parker Track, which is down right across from First Street in that area from Second Street all the way to, back up to Eighth Street on the water side and then the little triangle piece right here that's across from Mango Marley's. We have a resolution that's been prepared to accept that in a formal resolution. I guess our attorney decided that was what we needed to do instead of just vote to accept it. So, do I have a motion to read Resolution 2017 by Title O?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Any opposition to reading? Police?
Resolution 2017 dash 11, a resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving a land transfer from Bay County, Florida.
Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from anyone concerning these parcels? Is there any opposition to Resolution 2017 dash 11? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Other business? Mail? Those are from there, under your name.
It's totally up... Totally up to the council whether you want to debate this today or not, but what we attached in your packet was the latest updates from our attorney, Nick. And we didn't know whether you wanted to talk about it this week or wait two weeks at the, the voting meeting. So it's totally up to you to, to look at some of the changes he's made and determine whether those are appropriate or not.
Well, now, this is also a voting meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Assuming then that we have reviewed, we'll just start with the first one, which has no number, but it's the leave no trace ordinance.
I don't think there'd be any, any problem with waiting till the next meeting to vote on this.
Well, I'm not thinking that we're voting on it. I'm thinking, the question was, did we want to discuss it?
It's not on, it's not up for a first reading or anything like that. It's just that I, based on my one conversation that I had with our attorney, there was considerable misunderstanding between he and I about what we said. So I'm assuming, Bill, that's what, is that the purpose that we're, that this is on here?
That's correct. We can go through it a little more detail so we know what the audience wants us to talk about. If we go to the first section, he did define beach and the word unattended, which is a problem when we had the injunction against us. Moving forward, he did include the language to include business with the word person so that any property left on the beach is considered person or business property. The exceptions are really changed. Discarded items didn't really change. He did make an adjustment in the enforcement. The question was whether or not we wanted to have the persons picking up the property in the morning to be able to take something that someone is attending at the time that was a violation the previous night. In other words, if someone comes out at 6:00 a.m. and it had been left out all night until 6:00 a.m., do we take that property even though they are attending it at that time? That's a question for the council whether you want to do that or not.
Well, I don't like that we establish by affidavit or testimony of a law enforcement officer for a violation if we think it's a violation. I think personally, for me, I'm not in favor of trying to establish an affidavit or testimony of a law enforcement officer over an umbrella. I think if we have the right people on the beach picking up stuff, we can, we should be able to deal with that without trying to go get a law enforcement officer.
Right. It's, it's very difficult to take a person's property while they're standing there. Very uncomfortable on both sides. And it doesn't create a friendly atmosphere that we're trying to project. So I think what makes more sense to me is that maybe adjust that language so it doesn't sound like it's Gestapo tactics, but yet leave it at the discretion of the people picking the items up. In other words, if they go to the same section of beach and come across the same chairs and umbrellas day after day and someone is attending them day after day, and we know that they're not attended all night, in other words, they've been in violation from 7:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m., I think speaking with the people who have those umbrellas and chairs is the way to go in a more friendly atmosphere to get them to do the right thing. Most people do the right thing if they're confronted with the, the choice.
Will we continue having, since it's, they're not supposed to be there from 7:00 to 7:00? Typically, we're going to the beaches in the morning. Will we occasionally during the week or every other day or every third day or whatever, run a crew down basically at night to pick up so that, in essence, if we have people that are continuing to leave them there, we can pick them up at night?
Generally, no, because you got to have the turtle patrol ahead of you to make sure you're not, you know, botching up the turtles and their, their crawl to the nest and that sort of thing. We do occasionally go out earlier than 6:00 a.m. We don't announce to the public when that's going to happen. And so, we have picked up quite a few more items at 5:30 in the morning more than after 6:00.
Okay. I think that's a good, that would probably help also.
But if it's until 7:00 p.m. and it's still light out, if we wanted to, we could go say...
We could go at 7:00 p.m. or...
Right. We could go, and that's, was that what you were thinking? Yeah. We could go right after 7:00, 7:15, 7:30 while it's still light out. No turtles are going to come between that and 7:00 a.m.
Right. That's a possibility. We've not done that yet, but we could mix it up a little bit to see how that works.
Well, it would just help not having confrontation.
Okay.
So we're satisfied then to, if I'm hearing right, that we will take that language out and just be more discretionary with the people that are using, that are, that we have assigned to patrol the beach?
Right.
All right? That's, is that agreeable? Okay?
Okay. And that then is the, the leave no trace. Now we go to the beach vendor.
I have one question, just to clarify something. On page, we added the word business on page 14 under obstruction on the beach. Under penalties, it just says and person. Do we need to add and businesses there as well? I just don't want to get us caught in a situation like beach and private beach, like we were before, public beach. Under, on the page 16, Section 3 penalties, any person who shall violate, do we need to work, add the word and business?
I'm sure our attorney will argue that person covers everything, but to make it clear to the public, I'll suggest that he might add that in there.
And that would be more, that would be consistent to what we approved of last time?
Right. All right. As we move along to the beach vending areas, he did put these in yellow so that we could see what changes came about. There was a question about driving on the beach. He added this language, where it says, "Applications may include or request operate work vehicle on the beach in the area covered by the permit, as well as to and from the nearest vehicular access to the beach. Such requests may be approved as part of the beach vending permit if they are otherwise consistent with the city's ordinance governing driving on the beach." He also added the words and activities to the location. He also added a sentence at the end where it says, "The city may suspend or revoke a beach vending permit due to violations of the beach vending permit or applicable laws, including city ordinances." Does that sound okay? In other words, you can't drive it up and down the beach. You go to the next bypass and go and straighten out. Correct.
So, so before we leave, that language is relevant only to beach permits. So, a person, a beach vending permit, so only a person that has a beach vending permit at the locations as defined in the earlier sections can have a vehicle on the beach.
Right. And keep in mind, we do have another section of our ordinances separate from this ordinance about driving on the beach as well. And so, that would cover the general public.
And I understand what, so, just to clarify it, if we have a, a service by another person who has like 10 chairs they're delivering in front of a condo, they would be prohibited from going to the nearest section, even if it was right next to the condo, and driving on the beach to drop off the 10 chairs and umbrellas?
Unless they have a permit.
Unless they have, but the beach vending permit has to be tied into a business, correct?
Correct.
This prohibits any beach vehicles other than those that are approved by the beach vending permit?
Correct.
Will there be any language in the permit basically outlining what the vehicles are there for? They can't go outside that permitted areas?
Correct.
Got a question? Please.
Lisa Logan, 402 Maryland. Can you clarify for me one more time, because I'm not sure I understand? When we have the beach vendors, we have the four properties where they can work from? The four?
By this, by the definition that's described in this, that is correct. There are four locations currently on Mexico Beach that qualify for what we said that is...
Right. Okay. So if one of those is a rental company, are you saying that they can or cannot take a, an ATV and deliver up and down the beach? That's where I'm confused. Can they go out of their one section?
Can they go outside the boundaries of the business that supports the beach vendor?
Okay. Thank you.
But, okay, legally, they could go down to the beach rather than going, driving up and down the beach. And I know that that's what we're saying is prohibited. But they could drive down to, drown, drown the beach road and stop and then empty out their ATV or whatever, their four wheeler, whatever they're using, and walk and distribute their chairs and umbrellas.
Or go down the public road and go to the end?
Just, right. Just as long as they do not drive on the beach.
Sure. Now, ATV, you have to question, is it legal to have it on the street?
Well, right. But whatever they use, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about that, this one section? Yes, sir.
Ron Edgess from High Tide Beach Service. I guess I'm still a little, you're saying that just directly behind the permitted businesses is, is the only place the, the ATV can be on?
That's what, that's what this says.
That's what that says. Okay. Well, I was trying to, I still have a, a question about the, what's public beach and what's private beach behind?
We accept all our beaches as things that we regulate, all of our beaches. And this information is, we paid dearly for this attorney to write in this ordinance clearly defines that we don't, we don't separate between public and private beach. We regulate all of the beaches just like we have for years.
Exactly what is your business?
We put chairs and umbrellas on the beach.
And you were the one who I was speaking about, if you don't mind?
No, that's fine. That's why I'm here.
Because I know you came before the council a couple of years ago and were denied that even though at that time we allowed another business to ride on the beach.
That's correct.
And you were denied riding on the beach.
Well, at that time, I was told it was all private beach behind that establishment.
So, and, and that's why I brought it up. So, go ahead.
So he can deliver his chairs down the beach?
No, not according to this. He can't.
Well, his business is delivering the chairs down the beach, isn't it?
That's correct.
And he carries them one by one or three by three?
So you can only pull the chairs to the beach on a four wheeler, set there, and then you have to take two chairs, a quarter of aisle down the beach by foot?
That's correct. That's why we do it now. We drive our vehicle, our truck, to the end of the street and then carry them down to the walkover.
Okay. That works all right for you?
Well, you know, I, it, it's a lot of hard work to make, to say it wouldn't be a, much easier to use a four wheeler to access the beach on the beach accesses and go to where we were going. I mean, it would help tremendously to be able to do that.
All right. I have a question now. If you have an agreement with one of the four commercial companies on the beach and you apply for a beach, if he applies for a beach permit because he has connections with one of the four, then would he be allowed to, if he was hired to put 10 chairs and umbrellas out for a condominium, would he be allowed to drive down the nearest entrance to that condo and drop those chairs off?
No. Because his permit is for the Bonavista.
Okay. So anyone that has a business on the beach has to, it has to be generated by a business on the beach and existing business on the beach?
Correct.
Well, our business has never existed on particularly that. I have a relationship with the Bonavista, but the business that we have is all up and down the beach. We do different condominiums, Paradise Shores, The View.
Well, it seems to me that we're basically, if we don't allow you to use your four wheeler up and down the beach for your business, we're, we're more or less discriminating against your business.
It kind of feels that way.
And, and I, I don't know why, I mean, if the city has the strength to okay or disallow permits on businesses on the beach, why are we tying it to an existing business on the beach as we kind of always have? Because we have to be careful about discrimination since some people within existing business on the beach are concerned about us discriminating against them. So why would this gentleman be concerned about us discriminating against him? Does anybody understand what I'm trying to say here?
Completely.
I can answer it.
Go ahead.
Because we don't want to commercialize our beach. We never have. In 50 years, we never have. And if we allow, if we allow open commercialization on our beach, then we could have four wheelers, we could have, just like, I mean, we could have more than him running up and down the beach delivering their chairs. And, and the city has never, and that was the purpose for all the years of the peddler license, it defined where we were, where, where people could operate on the beach.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may say so, and I said this too when I applied for the permit, because there was another councilman that brought that same question up. And I said, "If you didn't want to permit commercialization of the beach, you wouldn't be allowing wave runners and parasails and all of that."
Well, they're in a defined location.
No, the wave, the wave runners and the...
Oh, they're in the water, sir, not on the beach. They're not on the white sandy beach. In the white sandy beach, the city has for years defined where those operations can take place, just like this ordinance does.
We couldn't do that with a permit regardless of any businesses?
Yes, I'm, I'm...
Would we state that in the business as to what would happen with that individual business by giving them a permit and then if they don't do what we tell them to do, we...
You don't get a permit.
We, we take the term, we cancel the permit?
Are you saying then just they can go up and down the beach delivering the chairs? Is that, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah. I'm, I'm thinking we're permitting him to do business on the beach in a limited amount, specifically, I understand the reasoning to begin with, but I still say, without having any businesses okaying a certain business on the beach and coming to us for a permit, we could control that by just who's, who we give permits to and who we don't give permits to.
Well, I agree with you and I, I think that we've seen his business and it's not one or two chairs. If you go along the beach, you'll see the business there. And if he applies for the beach permit, and yes, he's connected with Bonavista, but if in the permit, he's also connected with other realtors or a realtor, and I know you've connected with some condominiums, to ask to drive from the nearest location, as we've stated here, to drop off his chairs and then back, I'm not saying drive you up and down the beach because that's not what this says that we would allow. I wouldn't want them to be driving up and down the beach, but I don't see why we can't word it so that a business, if they have a permit, and we can deny the permit?
What time of day do you normally put your chairs out? All day or just in mornings or...
Well, usually from about 6:30 to 8:00. Depending on how many chairs we put out, we put them out and then we go collect them between 6:00 and 7:00.
Reason I ask that, if we were going to go that way, I think it's important to keep as many vehicles off the beach during the time most people are swimming. I would be, if we were going that way, an advocate of saying, okay, if we were allowing people to put chairs on the beach, our wave runners or whatever, because we're talking chairs now, but it could be other items, that it should be only between certain island, certain hours, so the beach would be free to the baiters and the kids and the moms and pops for the majority of the day without having to worry about vehicles running up and down the beach.
And if you'll notice in the request that I made, I told, I've stated that any business that comes in, if somebody calls me at 10 o'clock and wants a set, there's no way I'd take a four wheeler and go down and set that set up, okay? I'd do that like I do now. Those will be walked onto the beach. I'm asking for a very specific timeframe.
So we could, we could include that in your, in your permit?
Absolutely.
And you would sign off on that? And it says there, "The city may suspend or revoke a beach vending permit due to violations, basically of any kind." And so, the city still has control over your daily operation in that regard. I don't see, you know, I don't...
And if, and if you say 6:30 to 8:00, if we wrote 6:30 to 9:00, most people, the beach is not crowded by 9:00 in the morning.
We're always off of the beach by a little after 8:00. I, I won't, I work with the turtle patrol. If you want to talk to the turtle people, we work pretty, I see the turtle people every day. They, we'd never interfere with them, but between the time the turtle patrol goes through and 8:00, 8:15, we'll be done.
So I have a question. If you have a chair on Second Street and you have a chair on 31st Street and you've got three chairs on 40th Street, how would you pick all those up?
Well, I won't drive the four wheeler up and down the beach. That's, I, I can tell you that right now.
All right. So how would, just think of that. How, how would you get to those street ends? And you're saying you would, if I'm hearing this right, you would go down the public street to the street end?
Where the street goes in, go at, down the edge of the, the beach to where the chair was and then back out the same way I go in.
And, and how would you get your four wheeler from street to street?
It will be a licensed four wheeler. It will be a, a four wheel drive Florida licensed vehicle to be able to run on the street. Any other questions of me?
No, sir, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my only comment is, in trying to change whatever we're going to change, that so when we open, if, if the support is to open it up so that other vehicles can be on the beach, I think we certainly have to be careful with FWC. There's been some issues about other vehicles in, in general, and I, I know Mel is aware of that.
Right.
They have very strict regulations. Are you familiar with those, Chief?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. I think we're on the edge of overstepping what we have the authority to do without, when they are in defined areas and regulated, I don't, I, they have never had a problem to, that I am aware of.
That is correct.
I am, I'm aware of problems when we open our beach up for general vehicle traffic, even though we're saying we're going from point A to point B in a direct line, I think there's some potential issues there.
And our permit to groom the beach and things of that sort is tied to our dredging permit? So if we have a violation in grooming or someone getting into the dunes, they could pull our dredging permit?
There's concerns about not only this gentleman, but anyone else that comes up here, so I need a beach permit, I'm going to pass out five chairs, I drive down there, it, it's...
Well, we could say...
We have to be very careful with what we're doing and make sure before we just say, let's do that, that we don't jeopardize our operations in terms of our beach permits with, that we have with DDP and FWC.
Can we have the city administrator draw up a, I think you're right, if you're going to do that, it can't be just general language, so could we have something drawn up that, or regulations in essence, if we allow these type vehicles in any other place other than the four designated areas? You know, they have to be inspected, whatever, you know, this type of...
Well, I don't, I've just, over regulation, it just seems to me we're just getting, how much...
But if we don't do something to figure out what they are, then we're getting more into what you're talking now. I guess I'm looking for a way of saying, how, you know, what, what's needed to meet, to not go into these regulations that would cause this problem?
Well, if we don't issue any more permits, we don't really have a major problem, do we?
But if we issue one, then we have a problem of having to issue another one if someone asks for it.
Well, we may be discriminatory, but we may be looking at it from the standpoint of, like the house says, we've got too much business on the beach, and we do not need any more business on the beach, it's covered.
Well, then we should have to have something in there that says we only allow X number of things for what we have. And we're, we're kind of going in circles.
Yeah, let's do this, let's do this.
We could do it that way, just limit how many businesses we want on the beach.
Well, that's what, basically what we're doing now.
Well, that's in, in relation, but we're talking outside that limited area.
Well, but remember, we did this, we did this based on what's considered the need of the city, and it served our needs well. The fact that someone wants to put, expand outside this area commercializes our entire beach, and it's not, it, it seems to me there's no drumbeat to do that. Our, our little town has been well served by allowing very limited sections of our, of our beach to have these types of, of activities. So, but to stay on task, if we want to change that, I would recommend that we submit to Mel, or we can, if someone makes a, wants to make a motion to expand to other beach businesses that are outside of the scope of what we have in front of us, then we can, we can start debating that. But until we do that, if there's a consensus or a majority of us that want to expand outside of what the language has said that we've had before us for close to three months now, then I, I think that's the way we ought to go. So, Chair will entertain a motion on the particular topic of where beach vehicles are allowed. Is there a motion to expand that?
I would like to expand it because I think this gentleman is, is do that, but keeping in mind that I have no problem if somebody else comes up with the very same business that he has, saying, well, we've got that covered now, we're not going to issue any more permits right now. We may later, but not now. So, we have the power and the basis of, of issuing permits to basically control it unless the attorney says we have to open it up to two hundred people coming here on the beach. Now, things have changed in the last twenty years here, and they're going to change even more in the next ten or fifteen, when we start getting all these other people building around, and, and, you know, we've had fifty houses built here in the last four years, maybe three years. And so we're having more people on the beach. I don't know that this gentleman is going to jump in his four wheeler and go up and down the beach in the first place, because it may be quicker for him to take his truck and go down to the end of the street and walk down and pick something up than it is to run back and forth with the four wheeler. And again, with this in mind, if he becomes a problem and we start having complaints, then all it says in here, you know, city may suspend or revoke a beach vending permit due to violations. Says violation of any kind. So we still have the control over the situation. I agree with you. I don't want to look down the beach and see fifteen of these things running up and down the beach, but we don't have that right now, and even if we allow him to have the capability of being more convenient for his business to pick it up with the four wheeler early in the morning and late in the evening, I don't think that's going to upset too many people on the beach. If we had ten more of these doing that, yes. So, but we don't.
And you think you can tell the other nine no?
I don't know why we can't. We, we're telling, we're telling this, this gentleman right now that he can't run a four wheeler on the beach. What's the difference in telling somebody else?
Well, because, because, but he can, if he's working in these areas, he can.
Because I was going to say, he was told no two years ago. He was denied it, and we didn't have a leave no trace or beach permit.
Right now, he's tied to a business, that's where his permit is tied. I wonder if we could leave, leave no trace basically as it is, since this one, this gentleman is tied to a business, and make the needed changes if we need to make him, to allow him to do his business down the beach within the permit process?
Well, let's do this. Let's stay on task. We have before us the changes that were submitted, that we, that we were brought up by the administrators on the agenda. The Chair will recommend, will entertain a motion if we want to expand from the language that is currently in the ordinance and has been in the ordinance, then, because that'll require us to go back and get our attorney to, to write some more stuff in there, and then we can decide what we want to do. So the Chair will entertain a motion to expand the use of vehicles on the beach, and we'll keep it simple because even if it passes, it's going to require a lot more work to decide whether or not that's even something that we need to get involved in. So, is there a motion to expand the language for use of vehicles on our beach?
I would suggest that we should, I don't know, we should look at the possibilities having to do, we should spend more, more time than we're going to have.
Well, is there a motion to do that? Is there, is the...
Okay, I'm so moved.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
If I could, please. I think there's this worry that you're going to have a flood of applications for people to be driving four wheelers up and down the beach, and such is not the case. If you look at the next section of permissible locations, you have to meet all of these that are listed. You got to be general commercial or tourist commercial, you got to be located next to a hotel, motel, restaurant, et cetera, and we got those four locations. And the location is not on the beach dated to the city or other public agencies, so that means he can't do what he wants to do.
I understand, but, but it, it appears that we're trying to allow him to do what he wants to do, so it's going to take a rewrite of all of that. That's why I'm trying to just, if there's a, a need to go back and rehash this in the bottom of the ninth, with the bases loaded, then let's just do it and pay him to rewrite it.
Fair enough.
So, all right, there's a motion and a second to expand that language, and that's going to require more than just that one sentence right there.
Right.
Call the role, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Ms. Olber?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Putnam?
Yes.
Okay. Hire our attorney, put him on the payroll. All right, keep going.
The next highlighted area is under limited exemption from leave no trace. I think he got the date wrong on this. I think he meant to put in twenty eighteen. But nonetheless, this is where, you know, the, the current people who have chairs on the beach would be allowed to keep them until September thirty to twenty eighteen. And then the, the opinion would be then he would have to replace those heavy chairs with something smaller that could be taken off the beach each night. So I think with that change, twenty nineteen to twenty eighteen, I think that's what we wanted it to say.
But that one does not include the words wooden platform style chairs, but on page twenty six it does. And that date should be twenty eighteen rather than nineteen, right? You said? Good, okay.
Yeah, but if it says leave chairs, that takes care of all kinds of chairs, I think.
But, I, I agree, but I just think that we've had such a big discussion about the wooden platform chairs that... Anyways, the, the, on page twenty six, the, he had the same permit, and the only difference I could find was in this one section.
That is the only difference. There's two drafts of this ordinance. One excludes both, one excludes.
Right, and so the second one includes the words, which is on page twenty six, wooden platform style chairs and loungers. The first draft, page twenty one, does not include that.
But the intent is it includes everything?
Yes. You're concerned it doesn't include the wooden chairs?
Well, evidently we had two drafts. I'm, I guess he thought that maybe we need to make a decision. How clear do we want to put it in black and white?
Well, I say chairs include all chairs.
Now, the difference, the difference is that the one we're looking at there says permit to leave chairs, equipment, and other items.
That means the...
That means, that means everything.
Right.
Okay, the one, the, the other one that's coming up references chairs, only the chairs.
Chairs and loungers.
Right, right, chairs and loungers.
And I think that came because my memory serves me correct, or if you guys can correct me, we got into the discussion how the other items would be taken care of before we came to a full consensus, even though we had ideas of maybe moving it up to the side, then we went straight to the chairs and made a full agreement on that, so that's where that came from that we had to, is my guess.
Well, we need to pick between this one and the one we saw working. That's, that's, if I'm following what Nick's wanting us to do.
He wanted to choose either just the chairs or everything.
Right. And it was my impression when we left last meeting that this is what we had agreed on. Except for the date. So, we need to let him know so that he can decide what to write again of what we want. So we have this language, and then we have the language that's back on, I believe, on page twenty three. Twenty one, yeah.
Well, I like the language on twenty six just because it clarifies it completely, but I understand chairs are chairs.
All right, so I'll get my page twenty six, is the one we're looking at, Mel?
This is page twenty one right here.
Twenty one.
This is where, if, everything would be okay to leave.
All right, but twenty six is the one that clarifies that, that we have, we're, they're phasing out the chairs. Is that the one we're going with?
I'll make a motion for that.
For twenty six?
Yes.
Page twenty six. Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition? Anybody? Any comments? Any questions? All right. What else is on these two items? On, I mean, on these two orders. Now, we will have these ready. Well, I doubt we will.
We can do...
We'll do what we can do. You pass that on to us, just after, tell us, I'm not sure.
If we can possibly get the language...
It's going to take some, Chief, if you could, task you with checking with other law, the other agencies and ensure, and let's find out what we issued about, from FWC?
Yes, sir, FWC and DDP, that's what I'm going to say that you asked me earlier. I will check on that and find exactly what is recognized.
As, as acceptable for, for us permitting, allowing just a blanket, I know we've run into problems there.
Yes, sir.
I know we have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to hold off on the leave no traces, it's only one?
Probably so.
Okay.
Because it's, I think it's tied to the other one, I think it's, I mean, it's technically it's separate, but it's intermeshed enough to be that...
And the season's over anyway.
Let's see what we find out. We'll do some research on that. And then we, we can report back at our first meeting. Okay. All right, Mel, before I leave, is that, did we cover what?
That was it, Your Honor.
That was it? Okay. All right, moving on. Let's see. Under Trium Guff Coast, I put that on here. I think most of you are aware of what Trium Guff Coast is. If not, I'll take a few minutes. That is the legislative committee that has been appointed to oversee three hundred million dollars to the eight counties along the, from Escambia through Franklin County. They met last week. They have been, the money is in the bank. They are devising a application process by which, if you can imagine what three hundred million dollars is going to draw, it's going to draw a lot of people, it's going to draw a lot of requests, it's going to draw a lot of needs. Their definition is that they are looking only for economic enhancement and economic development. They're not going to pay us or any government entity or organization a check for, just say, here you go, I know you'll do it right, go fix it. They aren't going to do that. There's going to be a process by which each of us will be able to apply, and they're looking to have that done in sixty days. This is a one-time opportunity, if you would. They're looking to, to make some changes in Northwest Florida in terms of economic development. Creating jobs, creating things, heads in beds, they say. So, Mexico Beach, as we all know for years, is, we never thought we got a sliver of the pie, we never got a big enough piece of the pie. Our little location, our little town, we, well, this is a chance for us to make, to, to find some projects that will make a difference to us. Again, they aren't going to put water lines in the ground, they aren't going to build buildings, they aren't going to do things that government should do to, as you would, take care of themselves. So, at the meeting I went to, I started thinking and listening to what they were saying, and it's, and it was my opinion from several months ago. I put out that I was, I thought a concrete pier was an item that would be a, a great asset for our community. We have the only open guff pier and have had for years from Apalachicola to Panama City Beach. And I would like to ask the council, we need to move and move quickly. It's not that the concrete pier, there may be others that would, that, that fall into the category that we need it to fall in to be considered. that we needed to fall in to be considered. It's important to note that they will not fund any project 100 percent. None of them that come before them. They're expecting municipalities or organizations to have other funding sources or money that they have provided to lay their plan on the table when it's presented. So, there are several things I want us to try to do today, with the first being discuss projects that we think we would like to present to them that qualify under economic enhancement. I know we have other needs, but I don't know of any greater than something that is an identity with our city than our pier, and has been since 1949. So, I'll open the floor just for, I've got other things to say, but I wanna, I wanna try to just keep it, keep it inside a small circle right now that, to say that if we, I would like for us to discuss any ideas that we have that we think would be a project worthy of getting funded at some percentage. Now, there's, they didn't say we'll give you 10 percent, 20 percent, 80 percent. They said they will not fund none that are expecting 100 percent. None. So, are there other suggestions that we might want to entertain? Or would the pier be an item that we would put number one on our list? As far as economic enhancement?
Certainly needs help right now, to use a point.
Well...
It's in good shape, yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Well, it's a wooden structure. We've expanded to what we can expand with wood. We all know, I mean, we patch it, we do our best with it. But I think it's, if we think the pier is a project that we want to sort of wrap our arms around, then we'll, I'll continue on.
It and the canal are the big project, are the biggest assets we have that rely on us taking care of the canal, so I think number two is the pier.
Okay. Alright, are we good with that? Okay, here's my suggestion, and I'm gonna seek support from this council. I think that what we should do, if we're gonna make the pier our priority, I'm suggesting that we look carefully at our funds. We're gonna have some surplus funds from the canal project. And I say some, it's not really important, but that we do have some seed money to take action on fairly immediately. It is my suggestion that we prepare an RFQ for engineering services to include permitting, design, and construction of a concrete pier. We are in a position that we need the best partner that's out there. This is a specific project. We need an engineering company that can come to us with, that can show us that they've built, designed, permitted, helped fund, find, any, what's specific to our needs, and I think it is important that we do that.
With experience, right?
That has that background, because everything we do for us to get funded will require us to be a little creative and to know that we're going, that we're holding hands with the best we can put our hands on to walk us through this process. So, I think it's appropriate that we do that and do that immediately. That we prepare that and get it on the street. It doesn't commit us, it commits us to trying to find someone to sit down and talk to and say, hey, how are we going? What are the best steps? How can we most wisely spend what money we do have? I did find that during the canal project, even though it took eight years, we don't have eight years here, but we also have a different pool of money. We have money, those folks can write checks over there. They're not government agencies that you jump through hoops every day with. That if you have a rollout plan, you've done several things. You've shown, you've got skin in the game by that you have paid for the services upfront in the engineering side to have a shovel-ready plan. Second of all, you've, we've shown that we have started the permitting process, which is very important. That was on their list. If they're permitted projects, they're not gonna give you money if you say, well, we're applying for a permit and it could be two years down the road. You know what I mean? So we need to start, we need to get somebody on board. So I would ask for two things. I would ask that we, someone make a motion that we make our, that we seek through Triant Gulf Coast funding for a concrete pier. So that it can be on the record that this council is supportive of that project. So have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any opposition to that?
Now, this doesn't mean that we can't come up with a second.
Doesn't mean that.
Okay.
But while we're deciding what a second might be, we need to, we need to move forward with the first.
Right.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Are there any comments from anyone concerning what we're doing? Yes, sir?
I just have a quick question. Without knowing what it's gonna cost, oh, shoot. Hi, I think most people know me. I'm Dave Castro, 408 Seventh Street. Well, it sounds like a great idea, but without knowing what it's gonna cost and how much they're willing to fund, why would you make that priority number one if somebody in our town, community can come up with possibly a better solution, or maybe one that's not as good, but they'll fund a lot more? So why are you gonna make it number one? Go ahead with the RFP and all that other stuff, but have it a little bit more open. That's my, one of my comments.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Putnam?
Yes.
Okay, second of all, we need a consensus or a motion to pursue, proceed with an RFQ for this specific project based on permitting, construction, and design of a pier.
Some people may not know what an RFQ is.
That's just request for qualifications, commonly done in, in our business where we'll send that out. We did one recently for healthcare. I mean, not healthcare, health insurance, excuse me. It's nothing more than see what comes in. We will vet those ourselves and we will see what, you know, we're looking, making...
I have a question. On another subject, the city has terrible problems with parking. Would this money be available for such things as that along 98? It wouldn't include that. Well, these days, someone is gonna get hit by a car on the, getting out of the car and goes to the beach, you know? And that is a big safety problem.
We had somebody hit two years ago, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this money...
That's not a, that's not a parking motion.
Oh, okay.
You want a motion for...
I need a motion for an RFQ.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go off for an RFQ for the concrete pier.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Putnam?
Yes.
Okay, we will keep this, we need to move this up to the front runner as far as the RFQ, so that we can see, we can get some numbers, we can start talking to somebody about whoever we, whatever proves to be our, our partner in this, and then...
How many days did you say we had to turn it in? Sixty?
No, 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 no. Sixty days is the, is the time that they are, have designated to, to define what they're gonna use as an application process.
Okay.
I don't mean that we have to be the first one to get an application, but sometimes at the rate we go, I don't want us to be the last one to get an application. So, I'm suggesting that we use our concentrated energies and efforts to at least having someone on board so that we can start discussions of what we want to do and how we want to pursue. Okay, fair enough.
Do we want to encumber the money or not yet?
We do not. We don't, we're fine. We just leave, the money's, if we, we don't know what type of funds, one, until we know what we have, and second, until we get somebody on board and we can negotiate with them. Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 674. Mayor, that's got your, that's, that's the one on the property, I mean, on the building.
Yes, sir. This is the ordinance that, you know, when Bo Kriel came to the meeting about a month ago now, he talked about having done an ordinance for Port St. Joe. This is the ordinance that he had written. This went through the first reading for us, you know, at our previous voting meeting two weeks ago. But there was a couple of changes that needed to be done, and in the yellow, you can see where those are the changes that the attorney had suggested.
What page?
Page 28.
I love the numbers on the paper.
And what this does, you can see that it requires a reinforced concrete footing of sufficient size to resist gravity and et cetera. The B is there because it was a he previously. And it also says, "And otherwise meet the requirements of the Apico Florida Building Code." And when there's a manufactured home coming to town, once this is passed, if it gets passed, there are no more dry stacking of blocks as the piers to support that structure. In other words, it's gotta have a real foundation. Also, in the second paragraph, that's where it says that if you do use straps and that sort of thing, it has to be stainless steel, which can get quite expensive from what I understand. The only way you can get around that is if you have the galvanized, that is encased in concrete, something of that effect. And number three, there needs to be some architectural character to the design of the building, so it's not just a cracker box out there anymore. And also under paragraph four, that's where this requirement does not apply to elevated buildings designed to have automobiles parked below them. So the question is, does that meet the expectation for these language changes?
Does the best we can do.
Do we require the elevated buildings to be enclosed?
We do not.
So the concrete piers are just there?
Correct.
Which is not necessarily in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. The fact that it looks kind of like a dinosaur sitting there in the neighborhood, as opposed to all the other one-story or two-story normal buildings. I understand why people want to elevate them, but they're not going to get any better looking the longer they stand there like that. I don't know if we should consider some kind of covering. You know, like, we like to see in trailers. It used to be here, it used to require the trailers to have something underneath. I don't know. What do the rest of you think about that?
Everything concerns me. If you put in covering that's not really very, very stable, if we do get into wind that's coming through, if you have just the, you know, the overlap covering, that can be picked up by hurricane, picked up by tornadoes, and moved very quickly throughout the neighborhood and do damage.
That's true, yeah. But...
It looks nice.
Well, it doesn't look real nice now, does it?
I've got, three of mine become like this.
Yeah, well, we're having more and more.
Yeah.
And I don't know what people like Bo would suggest that we have that would withstand that, and I don't know if the rest of the council here is interested in doing that at all. It just, I don't know that it helps the looks of the neighborhood.
I think that's, to me, that's a separate item from this, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, it could be a separate item, but while we're talking about it, I don't know.
Other comments?
Nobody has anything else to say?
No, because my house has less.
And she's talking about you.
Well, I know.
Got it all the way.
And I understand, but it, that was in the area, and so I understand what you're saying.
Well...
We paint, I assume.
Oh, okay. And I don't even know if it's feasible, but, but I'm talking about over two blocks behind my house where everything else is down here.
Right.
And all of a sudden, you've got something way up there.
I don't know how you can, I mean, the only thing you could do would be to say you can't be so many feet up, and I don't know why we would want to be that restricted.
No, I don't think so either.
I mean, everybody has their own...
Maybe there's just no good way to handle it. Maybe we just need to, to look the other way.
I think in a year, you probably won't even notice with the landscaping and it'll just be part of the...
Thanks, Cooper.
Right.
Maybe plant their trees all the way around here.
You got anything else?
No, I'm done.
Yes, Mayor.
Lisa Logan, 402 Maryland. I have something, a comment on the section of that ordinance that talks about your architectural details. In 2011, the city council tried that exact same thing about making people have architectural details. It went over like a lead balloon. It was very clear from the comments and the number of people who made comments at that time that that didn't go over. You talked a few minutes ago about overregulation. Well, trying to tell people what their houses look like is overregulation. And Mexico Beach is not a homeowners association. You certainly have to have rules for construction safety, but when you get down to telling someone after they purchase a modular home that looks a certain way, you bring it into town and you have to add details because it doesn't look pretty, that's overregulation. And the fact that this particular modular home that was brought in on 19th Street hasn't even had a chance to be put on foundation and finished out, it's going to, it already has architectural details, maybe not to your liking, but it does have them. And for this ordinance to say that any new or remodeled buildings have to have certain things on the front, keep it from looking like a rectangle, I will be more than happy to go with each of you around town and point out to you the hundreds of buildings that are square and rectangular with flat faces that have no architectural details. So I think if you want to have something that is controlled to that extent, you need to leave it to a homeowners association and not the town as a whole. At the first meeting for the revision of the comprehensive plan, I was one of three people there, other than the planning and zoning board, and that was one of the big things that came up in that meeting, and it was reported back to y'all that our extraordinary architecture is one of the charms of this town. And what we decided in that meeting that that actually meant was, it was a freewheeling style. You have a total mix of architectural details. You drive down any street in town and you have old trailers with great details, you have gingerboard house, you have log cabins, you have all sorts of things. This is getting to the point where it is telling people, no, you got to have, mm, specific things on your house. And I think that you need to take a ride around town and look at what you're doing and talking about, because this is a very slippery slope that takes away from the character of the architecture, and it's doing exactly the opposite of what this says. of the architecture, and it's doing exactly the opposite of what this says that it's going to preserve it. No, it's going to make it, uh, homogeneous, so think about it.
Thank you. Okay. Again, this is in here to just for us to see that what, those changes that were made. The first reading...
Was two weeks ago.
We had a few little freaky things, and that's what's been done.
Right, the September 12th meeting.
This is going to be on our agenda for next meeting.
Correct.
For the, uh...
For the second reading.
Second reading. Okay. Anyone else on that? Uh, harbor master agreement?
Yes, sir. I'm not aware that we have in place a harbor master agreement stipulating what the harbor master does or supposed to do. So I worked with George to come up with this, I call it a memorandum of understanding. It's a contract, whatever you want to call it, but some understanding of what is supposed to be done out there. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I just want to read, uh, the first paragraph. "The harbor master must maintain good public relations, responds to inquiries and complaints from boaters, fishermen, and the general public in a timely and diplomatic manner, maintains noticeable presence around the canal in order to educate and assist the public, answer questions and concerns, and protect the boating public and vessels from unlawful activity." In other words, protect our investment because we spent a lot of money, and not only we did, but a lot of agencies gave us money for the redo of the canal, and so we want to protect that investment. So once we get past the intent, the term will be, uh, an annual agreement that will automatically roll over unless either he or the city exercise a thirty-day notice. It goes through the responsibilities, it goes through the leasing requirements of the boaters. We do provide a cellular device for his use. We will provide the cost of forms. We don't give him an automobile mileage, or in his case, a truck mileage allowance. The old percent that we used to use was twenty-five percent of all the mooring fees taken in. We changed that to ten percent because we did increase the mooring fees. We have more slips now, so the potential of this position making a lot of money was up there pretty high at twenty-five percent. So we did some calculations and came to an agreement of ten percent, and we think that's going to be in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen thousand dollars is our guess. But to protect him, we wanted to make sure that there's a minimum of ten thousand dollars. That shall be no problem reaching that, but we just wanted to give him a, a lifeline, you might say.
Any questions on that, on the memorandum of understanding?
Just only one question. Uh, in the leasing requirements, we have a fixed fee for penalty, the ten dollars, and in fact, the other way, look down. Uh, ten dollar fixed fee for penalty for non-payment and so forth. My only question is, is that as we change prices, which doesn't happen a lot, I know that, would it be better to have a percentage in there of, you know, whatever the fee is, so that if we change the price from ten dollars for a dockage fee up to twenty dollars, uh, we don't have, you know, we get a little bit more because what we require more from the person for the fees. So I have a good question, just would it be better to have a percentage than a fixed amount?
Totally your call.
Uh, it seems like ten dollars a month for somebody not paying their bill is pretty low.
Yeah.
Is that what it's always been?
Never really had one.
What if we had the percentage?
Yeah.
Then we would never have to go back and change it.
And change the fixed fee.
We wouldn't have to be...
Well, I don't have any problem with the fixed amount. I just think ten dollars is too low.
I agree with you there.
I agree.
You know, more like fifty dollars. People don't pay the bill, they don't need to be there.
Do we up it to fifty, or do we put in a percent of ten percent? Or is that too high?
Ten percent is what they pay on a monthly basis, as you say.
What's the lowest? Do you have any, I mean, what is, what's the range? I forget. Of what the fees are monthly.
Oh, the annual, well, I don't know if I included it in here or not.
Did you include them? I'm sorry.
I don't think I did.
It's not in there.
Yeah. I included what Philip had approved a couple of weeks ago back, but I didn't include the rates. But anyway, it goes, uh, up to three thousand dollars for the annual fee, and it's a hundred and some bucks for the weekly.
Well, if you did ten percent, you'd get your ten dollars for the weekly. If you did ten percent and they paid annually and they're not paying, that's a lot more money, and I think it's better representative of that fee than ten dollars.
Okay. So if you wish to change it to ten percent instead of ten dollars, we certainly can.
I don't have a problem with changing each of the ten percent.
I just tried to make it simple because once you go percents, then you get people on the, in the field making a percentage back calculation on the fly, and it's not always easy.
Yeah, X, Y, and Z. Fifty dollar charge would be better than a percentage.
Well, ten percent should be, you just move a decimal point.
Yeah.
Does a municipality ball, are they exempt from penalty and interest charges that everybody else pays?
Well, we are, we're supposed to have one of the slip fees for our own use anyway, and we're exempt from having to pay anything.
I'm talking about what we charge.
Oh.
Are we exempt? I don't think we are. Like, you have to be careful of what you, you can't just throw out some ridiculous number as a penalty for not paying. Have to be careful of that. The whole point isn't to try to make it a revenue source, it's just to encourage people to pay their, pay their bill. It's not a, it's not a revenue stream.
Right.
So penalty and interest are not something that, I don't think we can discretionarily decide, well, make it fifty dollars. I, I think we have to be careful with that. As a penalty, not as the fee, but as the penalty for not paying the fee.
Ten percent, you give it ten dollars, and that's a quick, I think, penalty for something.
I know, but if you look at any bill you get and you say you hadn't paid it on time, you don't pay ten percent a month, I can tell you that.
I'm kind of sorry I brought it up.
Well, then why don't you just, why don't, why don't you just act like you didn't?
I, I...
Okay?
I'm going to shut up.
Okay. Uh, if you would, roll on to the next section there under our, where it's our dockage agreement. We, I know we've all looked at this, but I just have a question. Keep on going. Keep on going. Right there. Nope. Uh, on page thirty-five. Is that thirty-five? Yeah, at the top. Right there. It says, "I am submitting this application to lease a boat slip in the Mexico Beach Boat Slips." I think that should say Marina. Does that, or is that the right, we, we, I didn't understand that.
We can have it say whatever you want.
Well...
But if that Marina makes it clear, then that's fine.
Go to hell.
I just didn't want people to get mixed up with, uh, you know, the Marina next to the Shell Shack.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That, that is known as the Mexico Beach Marina. Okay.
Maybe you should tell Mexico Beach, go to hell.
No, no, I, forget I said it. Everybody knows where it is. I'm going to take your advice. Okay. Any other questions on vacation, uh, harbor master agreement? All right, number six, vacation rentals. Uh, I put this in here, and it was a response not only to last month's meeting, or last, our last meeting where a lady asked about that, but I've had multiple people ask me, not ask me, but voiced concerns about short-term rentals in neighborhoods. I wish I had done a little more research than I had, I thought I had, but I haven't. And I'm, I'm, I think not a few meetings ago, Bill put something on the agenda and decided when it got here that we didn't need to have it on the agenda, but, and not, maybe this isn't one of those topics. But the research shows, and I've spoken to some other municipalities that are mentioned in the Attorney General's opinion, and there is no fix for, uh, the Florida statutes are very clear. And the Attorney General's opinion that is in our packet references those statutes. And so what we end up with in Mexico Beach, like in, and certainly we're not unique in any form or fashion to short-term rentals throughout our, our community, uh, that they need to be handled as a, you know, like a nuisance if you have someone that is not doing right or is loud and not, uh, creating a disturbance in an area, uh, then you simply, that should be treated as a nuisance call and not, and not an attempt by the city to say, this area of town can't have short-term rentals. So I am satisfied that what we are doing is the best we can do. And if there are issues, and I will tell those that have spoken to me personally, I'll let them know that, that that's what they will have to do because we have some places that are very well-accepted and behaved, they don't have any issues. So the short of it is, I put it on here, I was unaware until I recently spoke to, uh, the people that are referenced in the Attorney General's, uh, Williston Mansions down in South Florida. I spoke to their city manager and asked what they did, did they pursue any of this? And they said they did not, that it is, that their attorney recommended that they do it the other way. So short-term rentals are not something you can zone out. They're not, not, not that we would even entertain doing that, and the way it's written in here may, make the implication that that's what I was in favor of, but it's not. I was trying to find out if there was a way to do it, but I don't think it merits the discussion anymore, quite frankly. So, is that, anybody else got anything to say with that? Anybody here have a comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Do we have any miscellaneous items?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This packet right here is the, uh, for the playground equipment of Mr. Mark. We went out to bid, we got three bags. Um, I don't expect any, or any like that today, that's for the September 12th meeting. Anyway, if you guys look through it, uh, we've got Swartz Association, we've got Great Southern Recreation, and J.A. Dawson and Company, both the three companies that stayed on the project. Um, the first page you see, uh, it paid for me, Jordan Williams, and Pam Madrid, sit down, opened up each bid, read them aloud, uh, and went through each one. Long story short, three of us at the bottom of the page picked option two from Great Southern Recreation for forty-nine thousand dollars. The other ones just look cheap. They just look very cheap and we discussed.
You picked which one?
Uh, from Great Southern Recreation.
Great, okay, Great Southern Recreation.
Option number two.
Okay.
Which is...
Forty-nine bucks. Is that covered in our, is that covered in our money?
It's covered in our money, yes, sir. We got fifty thousand dollars apart of our grant.
Okay.
They take care of taxes.
Don't worry about that. But it does give us everything that we requested, and it even did some. If you go to this page here, it looks like this one.
Mm-hmm.
It gives us all the swing we asked for, two additional stuff, you know, we don't particularly need, but the, um, activity areas for the kids, uh, this is a rock climb structure or something going on, I don't know if it's similar like it, and then you got the monkey bars there. Um, so they gave us everything that we asked for, and then some.
So what's on this page is the forty-nine, that this single page is the...
That single page with all the stuff on it, that's part of the forty-nine. And that green...
Oh, okay, and the green thing behind, okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's a big one, you were talking.
All right, and why would we not vote on that?
Because we, we had advertised that it was going to be formally accepted at the September 12th meeting.
Okay.
The adult exercise equipment, we also did at the same time we did the, uh, playground equipment, and we received, so I've reached out to several companies personally and have waited to hear back to them. And September sixth, we will give our bids back for the paving projects.
September sixth.
Yes, sir.
Now, for the public, those of you here and those playing here, this playground equipment we're discussing is for the park next to City Hall. For clarification first. Okay. Any, any questions for Philip? Thank you. Okay. Uh, any other, Ms. Wayne?
Alan, I, I don't know if this qualifies, I, I'm just for anybody else. I was over at St. Joe, and my insurance guy said, "What are y'all doing over there?" And I was afraid to answer that. But, uh, he's, I said, "What about?" And he said, "Your fire insurance." And he said, "If we're fixing the I O S, we're getting a rating or whatever," he said it was going to be pretty high. I think he said about a nine, which that would mean fire insurance rates go up, and if we ever reach a ten, a lot of people wouldn't, a lot of insurance companies wouldn't even write here. I just, I don't know what we can do about it, but it's something to, you know, to keep in your mind and be thinking about.
Well, what we said we were going to do several, not the last meeting, but one of meetings, several meetings back, that we were, had tasked Mark at that time to do some research and, and try to come up with, we, we went into quite a discussion of trying to make a commitment because I think it's no surprise that what the I S O rating that we fixed, or have received, or will soon receive, uh, and I hope we don't lose sight of that. Now, unfortunately, since then, Mark has resigned, and we have no one quote in that position to do the legwork that I think is going to be necessary, uh...
He's kind of working on it a little bit because his last day's September the first, so he's not left yet.
But I don't think this table should lose sight.
Right.
Regardless of who is in that position that we're going to do, that we're going to, with whoever we, we get, I assume, have we advertised?
I have an update I can give you. It closed yesterday. We have five applications. We need to meet today to discuss who we're going to interview. I'm assuming we're going to interview all five and move on from there. So the position has been advertised and closed yesterday.
Okay. Well, then I would suggest in your, in your, in your process of interviewing, look for someone that's, and it's nothing wrong, I mean, I don't mean that should be the top priority, but it doesn't hurt to have some skill set there of, of background or understanding of, of what, what he's walking into and what some expectations are for him.
Based on, based on just looking at the five applications, I think we have five strong applications, so I think all five are going to be prepared for. What's coming?
So, right, you're right. That's a good point that there, when those ratings come out, there's chairs are going to, most likely, there, there are going to be some questions asked about, hey, what are you doing? And, uh, because it's, it does affect, no question, it does affect our community.
We're going to pay for that building one way or the other. Well, as a matter of fact, we may find out that taxes can go up some and not be as much as your insurance is going to go up.
There was an interesting article in my city paper, uh, there was Springfield, which community was it?
It was Parker.
Parker. They had a rating of nine when their guy came in, and now they got rated up.
Yeah, they're down to five.
Six or five, so it's a rating.
What are we now? Do we know?
Five.
Five.
We're five now?
No, yes.
Yeah, we were. Well, the, we were, I don't know.
Yeah, we are.
Well, if we go down to a die, that's, it's going to cost us a lot of money. Going to cost everybody who owns a place a lot of money.
Now, remember, it's not, I don't want to sound like I'm of authority because I'm not, but it's not all, a nine doesn't mean necessarily that everyone's insurance goes up. It does mean that you're susceptible, based on the carrier you have, that you, but it's not like somebody just going to walk through town and say, okay, everyone in town has an insurance.
Right, but some of these people may drop you, you know.
I'm not saying that won't happen.
I'd say individual companies have certain levels of which they're not going to go below, uh, for the rating.
I just hate with that camera there that we're not, that we just don't need to say something as if, you know, we're going to...
I'll take that.
Run out of town and everybody jump off a wall or something because their insurance is going up. That's not the case. That's not the case. Okay. All right. Moving on. Any other miscellaneous?
I got one thing, but I was going to cover it during my report, if I could do it an hour later, doesn't make any difference.
We need a change.
We have an extreme amount of public scrutiny on buildings right now. There's a real nice gentleman who is proposing to add something to his home on 7 Magnolia Drive. And what it is, let me see if I can get this changed where we can rotate it.
What page are you on?
Not in your packet. The existing home is right here. There's a garage that he wants to build. This little area that looks like it's crossed out is like a, I call it a widow walk, but he called it a tower. You can see how it is connected to the main structure. That is the important question of the day, because a garage, by definition, is an accessory structure to the principal structure on the lot. If you have an accessory structure, it can only be, in some cases, depending on your zoning, 12 feet could be 16 feet. The tower is going to be 26 feet tall. So, his proposal is that he is building a hallway, because as you know, building just a roof from one building to another doesn't constitute it being connected. So, he is proposing to do an actual hallway, and you can kind of see how the hallway will look. So, he is hoping to us that we define his garage, because of the hallway being connected to the principal structure, that it's all one structure. If that's the case, you can have 32 feet high, and he can have his widow walk or tower, whatever you want, and that we can view the ocean from where he is. So, I kind of want to get your feedback, whether you thought that was an appropriate way to connect a building to make it one.
What if he doesn't connect the building?
Then his garage will be fine. He can have some livable space above the garage, that's not the issue. The issue is the height of the, the tower.
That's the only issue.
That's the biggest issue, yes, sir.
Well, I'd love a copy of all that to look at it and get back to you next week.
You got a question there?
Yeah, just, just one.
Sure.
Just one. And has that been PG?
It is not. We just got it in, and it came to my desk last week, so I thought, good opportunity to bring it up before you folks first, just to get your opinion, if you're willing to share.
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't really, I think it would be more appropriate that, that we wait, passing it out, but some of the things you just said aren't exactly what some of the interpretations...
Then why don't we have PG? Yeah, I would suggest...
But anyway, I'm not going, that's...
Yeah.
All right, so, we'll, is it, then it sounds we will defer until it passes through the right channel? All right. Chief, you got anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Anything from ESU, that anybody have, or?
Not at all.
Not at all? Okay, Phil, have you done, you got more?
Negative.
Well, what about, what about our DEP permit?
Per the...
Pavilion at the canal.
Jeff and I spoke about that just this morning. We got the survey done, we'll have that in hand, and we'll get that sent back to DEP. They just got finished.
Did the deal work last week?
Yes.
CAD drawings should be done today.
Yeah.
Okay, light poles at the canal?
The light poles are installed. They're going to come back to put the lights on, at which point I've already spoke with Mr. Dwayne on site. My biggest concern is, we've moved them twice now. Original location was down at the retaining wall, and we moved it a few feet up the hill, and now we moved it again further up the hill. I told Dwayne that my concern is, we're going to have sufficient amount of light shining down on the sidewalk area so that, you know, people can use it. And right now, we're not so, he says that there will be, I'm not 100% convinced that we will. In the event that that's not the case, then we'll have to backtrack and rethink something else. But they moved it back up the hill because they said the truck could reach halfway or midway down the slope, so...
All right, so, let's say it does light it, what, do we just, they make that call, or we make that call?
I would say we make that call. If we don't feel that it's providing a safe environment for people to use after, after dark, then we absolutely will make that call. I will absolutely make that call.
And how will that be determined?
We're going to go down there after dark, we'll get the lights installed and see what it looks like, see how safe it is to walk. I mean, even though our rules and regulations on the canal do say that you can't leave your, your power cords or your hoses and whatnot stretched out across the sidewalk, it's going to happen. So, we need to have sufficient enough light that if that does happen, people can see that, that cord or that water hose and not trip over. If that is not the case, then we're going to have to redo it. We're going to have to redo it.
And when are they going to light it?
Uh, Dwayne said that they're supposed to have it lit this week.
Okay, what have we done with the curbing down there?
Curbing?
What have we done there?
We are still waiting on the...
Just coordinating with their curbing sub to get it scathed.
Okay, and the, and the conduit, just...
I spoke with Bill about that last week. He called me Friday. He's hoping what we can do is, he's got a way to, to go through that conduit pipe, clean it out, and then sleeve it, re-sleeve it with something on the inside. That would still give us enough room for our wire and all that good stuff, but keep us, because I explained to, to Bill that if it comes to the point where we got to cut concrete and all that good stuff, if it, once it's re-poured, if it looks like a patch, we're not going to accept it. And we all know that it's going to look like a patch if we do that. So, he's going to, he's going to go down and try to ream out that conduit pipe, re-sleeve it, and after that, should be fine. Last resort is tear out the concrete, though.
Can I ask a question while we're talking about the canal?
Sure.
Have we ever thought about paving the rest of the canal drive there?
We're working on it as we speak.
So, we have money, but we're going to need to...
It's inside, it's inside the 6L line, so you got, you got to, you got to do all the stuff that, that takes to do that.
Yeah, but we're looking into doing that.
First cleaning, table?
These guys have, you know, also done the, the survey work for those three, is it three streets? Yeah, those three streets. So, yeah. We did get Bestway Sheds in Panama City is the only company that we have found that will build us a pavilion to our size that we need with wood trusses. Nobody else will do it. That price ranges from $9,500 to $10,500, depending on the, the type of material you use for the roof panels.
Where are you putting this?
At the boat ramp.
Okay.
This is for the official landing.
Are you going to have us something to look at then? I mean, it's just that much money? So, we're making decisions? Have you heard anything about the pilot?
That is in St. Joe Company's corner now. Duke Energy did their thing, St. Joe looked at it.
When's the last time we talked to them?
Last week.
Last week.
Okay, we're going to talk to them this week.
Yep. The, what we're going to have to do as far as giving you something, or giving you guys something to look at is, or a rendition of how it's going to look down there.
Right.
Yeah, we'll get that for you.
Any comments for Public Works? Smiley, go ahead.
I just have a reminder to the council, your next meeting is the 11th of September at 6:00 PM for your first budget hearing. And the next day will be your regular meeting, so your next meeting is actually a public hearing, and then the council's the day after. That's it. All right, Mayor, back to you. I have nothing else, you're on.
I would just like to thank Philip for getting our banners up, and...
They look good.
The idea was to get them up Memorial Day, but Duke Energy doesn't work as fast as Mexico Beach, so, but we appreciate Philip doing it, and it has been a long time coming. From what I understand, lots of people have been asking for this for a while, so, thank you. And it's, even though they look small, those things are five feet long, but they look tiny. It looks nice, Philip, thank you.
I will let the guys know, thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
So much.
Thank you.
Come.